All right, welcome everybody to the Kichai City Council meeting is now seven o'clock. You're gonna go ahead and get started. Debbie, could you please call roll?
Todd Hestrom.
Here.
Paul Warren.
Here.
Kendra Baldrige.
Here.
Matt Brum.
Here.
I'm going to remind everybody to please use your microphones. And if we could all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to approving tonight's agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's agenda or Matt any changes?
No changes.
Now we don't mean the executive session, so that can be struck. Any other changes, council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the agenda as written with the striking of the executive session.
I'll second.
Motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
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 Cares for him. Move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Matt, any changes to the consent agenda?
No mayor.
Any questions, council? Seeing none?
Yeah, I'd like to ask mad question, just reading through the board packet. Could you point out the savings on our Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal? I think it was six percent, which is pretty unusual.
So yeah, our premium did come in six percent lower than expected in this year's budget 2024. Staff had budgeted for a thirty percent increase, given the year before, which was a thirty-four percent increase. So our six percent savings is roughly eighteen thousand dollars. What we had budgeted is roughly three hundred thousand for the thirty percent increase, so huge savings. Not often do you see insurance rates come in lower each year. They usually progressively go up, so we were pleased.
And that's why I was asking, because that's pretty unusual for the rates to come in.
Yeah.
Especially after the hit we took last year.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for calling that up, that's amazing. All right, any other questions, council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Motion by Matt, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
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 Cares for him. Move on to the communications section. Kichai civic groups and committees, do we have any civics and groups and committees? We do, Emily is here.
I'm gonna read from my phone, so I stay focused, so apologize, it's not usually my MO. Council and Kichai community, next Thursday is the first meeting of the year for the Kichai Fair Committee. I had the privilege of leading the fair committee for the last year, but unfortunately, my circumstances have changed and I am no longer able to fulfill the role of president. Due to a recent and serious health diagnosis in my family, I have made the choice to step back from the fair in order to be more present and available as we navigate the road ahead. The fair committee, it's more for the community than the council, but the fair committee needs more members of the community to get involved. To be very honest, as the volunteer numbers stand, the fair committee cannot organize the types of events that we know this community wants. We have currently about seven consistent members. That'll be six, since I will be needing to step back. So that number needs to double at minimum. The fair committee hears your desire for a parade, for fireworks, for a dance, for a raffle, but I cannot understate the amount of time and effort that goes into organizing such an event. So the more people we get involved, the less that falls on a smaller number of people. So the less effort each person really needs to put in. So if it is important to you to have quality community events, then I would encourage you to plan on attending the meeting next Thursday at seven in the community room. Council and city staff, I just want to thank you for being so lovely to partner with over the last year. It's been a pleasure. And if any fellow committee members, there's nobody that I would rather work with.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service and yeah, thank you. Any other civic groups or committees? We'll move on to Kichai good news. I think we need a little bit. Does any other council member have any Kichai good news before I start? Does staff to give me a second?
So I came to the police department, I believe it was back in March, April of this year. We had two police officers on staff at that time. Today, we have successfully hired and filled our last position in the police department. So the police department is fully staffed at this time. And the officer is a great fit for new police department, plenty of experience. And so we successfully staffed the police department and will be moving forward. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief, thank you. So I want to call out the amount of selfless people in our town. They really, they never surprised me on how amazing they are. We had three residents during the first snowstorm who went out and they shoveled or cleared their neighbors' driveways of the snow. So thank you David R., Beth and Bill W. for doing that for your neighbors. You guys are what we strive to be in Kichai. I also want to call out Mayor, former Mayor Spear and his wife Patty. They made a Kichai snowman and that was on the Kichai community page, if you missed that. Bloomerang has also been doing some amazing deals, so go out and get your roses. It's ten dollars for a bouquet of roses if you don't get a vase and thirty dollars if you do. Also, there was a shout out on the Facebook page, the Public Works, for the clearing of the streets and just being amazing and all the work that you guys do. And I also want to call out the Kichai Police Department for all the work that they've done throughout the storms and being out there handling accidents and just making sure we're safe. So thank you all and thank all the staff for all that you guys do, especially during those hard times to get here and make sure our city runs. That's all the Kichai goodness I have. Is there any others out there? All right, seeing them, we'll close Kichai goodness. Then we have a very special guest tonight. Commissioner Meister is here from Sedgwick County to give a Sedgwick County update. We're gonna turn off our lovely logs to be able to pull up his presentation. Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. Good to see you again. Nice to meet the council members and welcome and thanks for actually, and Mayor Ashley asked me to, she's seen a little bit of this before, and just to present, what does the county government do? We have twenty cities within Sedgwick County, obviously Wichita. Now Derby is a city, what they call it, the first class based on population. And then there's eighteen other cities ranging all the way to, to Eastborough is still a city within Sedgwick County. So I've got about ten, ten or twelve slide presentation just to show you. So you could learn about any, what we do at the county level. I was seven years at the Wichita City Council, so I had some experience in city administration over city. And then moving to the county was kind of eye opening for me. Dave Under retired from the city, from the county commission, so I took over that spot. So with that, let's just move on to this. So a difference is, I'll kind of curse it around. This is our org chart, which you all, we all in business have seen org charts. But the difference is at the, at the city level, you have the city administrator and the manager that reports to the city council and then the manager does all of the functions under that, including police chief and everything else falls under him. So if they don't like the city manager or they don't like the chief, well, they gotta go to the city manager because the man, he, they all report to the manager. But at the county level, which is what was really, the city manager or the county manager right there is Tom Stoltz. Now above him is, that's us, the Board of Commissioners, we're elected. But also independent electors starting at the right, the county treasurer, you vote for her. The Register of Deeds, you vote for her. Kelly Arnold's, the county clerk, that's voted on. Sheriff Easter is voted on. District Attorney Mark Bennett is voted on. The election commissioner, Laura Rainwater, is appointed by the state. And then all of the judges in the eighteenth judicial district, all those judges are elected as well. So the difference between the city and the county is, there's a whole lot of people that are elected that no matter, no matter if, I don't like what Tanya is doing at Register of Deeds, it doesn't matter. It's the citizens voted who are in. So she's in and, but we as the county and you as the county taxpayers, you have to help fund all these operations. So it's a little awkward to me and then, then from there, I'm Tom Stoltz and you see all the stuff we do with the, you know, with all of that. So, which is typical of what you do. So there's, there's two, I'm gonna show you two slides. Here's the roles of the county government that's directed by the, because the counties, there's a hundred and five counties in the state, probably about ninety too many, but that's what it is. It was, the state was chartering the fact that when we, when the state of Kansas was, you had to be one horse ride away to do county business and back in one day. So that's why we have so many counties. And I feel sorry for a lot of the counties that really struggle. They got a county government and a school district or two and that's why they're kind of struggling surviving. I'm not sure that they were originally meant to sustain themselves. I'm not saying anything bad against them, but that's why we have a hundred and five counties. So, but because counties are part of the state government, counties are directed to, to have roles representing the state and that's what we do. We're required to do elections, the property valuation department, that's the appraiser. Taxes, the collecting them, there you go. Public safety, the sheriff, the DA, the court system, those are all required at the county to do those on behalf of the state. Human, human services, aging disability, health and so on. And also not included in there is the coroner. We have to, I should have added that, I'm sorry, it's not there, but so, so the state, the county coroner is a product required by the state. Stuff that we do not related to the state are EMS, which is your ambulance service, nine-one-one, the fire district, the planning and building commissions, the regional forensic science center and then the public works as, as you have public works as well. The science center is kind of interesting, there's only three of them in the whole state. Sedgwick County has one, Johnson County has one, and then the KBI, Kansas Bureau of Investigations, like the FBI, KBI, has their own forensic science. The reason that Sedgwick County has one and Johnson County has one is the pressure from the court system. So there's a, and that costs us about six million a year to operate. But, so there's a event, a murder, a whatever, and you need the stuff that you see on, on forensic science stuff. And by sending that way before my time, this is about twenty years ago, they was all go to Tepeka, just a big delay, so the person's in jail or not and they can't uncover the event. So back then, the city police, if you've been around, you're happy with Chief Phil Watt?
Yes, sir.
So the, so the, the city and the county and the judges and all the investigators said, hey, we, we need faster turnaround for, that's why. So we and Johnson County, we have our own forensic science center. We don't need to necessarily, but we do it for the, for the public. Then the roles of county government, everything, everybody's got administrative functions. One thing that we do, that's, that's a, a little bit, we also add, which it should be in here is, we are involved in economic development, whether at the county level and the city Wichita level. We, we give Greater Wichita Partnership, GWP, money to fund their one hundred percent full time on economic development for the whole region, the Greater Wichita Partnership region. That's proven to be fantastic, in my opinion, because fifteen, twenty fifteen and before when I was at the city, city had a, Wichita had a economic development group, Sedgwick County had an economic development office and, and the Chamber of Commerce had an economic development office. So if somebody from outside called and said, hey, we want to open a Tilly Wing store, they'd go to government, you know, one eight hundred, which government. So fortunately, back in fifteen, we got together and said, let's just have one that's full time economic development. And they've also, and they support everything that, that you as Kichai, Opportunity, Park City, all of that can, can go to there. And then now the government kind of gets out of the way, we just help fund them. We help fund them to the tune of about four hundred thousand a year. That pays for operate, or their salaries and stuff, but they're full time that way. And that way, government salary, they'll call us, they'll call me, hey, we got this company in town, would you have lunch with them and explain the region or whatever? So we just play when, when we're asked to play. I think it's a pretty good model, it's proven to be pretty well. And then the other functions, personally I struggle with a little bit. So interest bankers under the county, exploration place, the zoo and the Sedgwick County park. So cities like you all, you do a lot of stuff, so to speak. And the county is just kind of the backbone, the jail, you know, eight, nine-one-one, EMS. The county really is not, shoot, is not directly, that's not really not in the core function. All of these are good, they're great quality of life stuff, but the county government is not necessarily the quality of life leader as you all really, like you just talked about now, people volunteer to, to do stuff and things like that. So just a little bit different. The budget goals here, it, that's just what we're doing in twenty-four. You can see what it is. Mental health is a big deal. Homelessness, we're trying to work on really hard. And we took the, we took the theory that, that no mill levy increase and actually we decreased on mill levy just under about half a mil on our budget for twenty-four. For you all to talk about property taxes, I know it's a big discussion. Another thing that's hard to understand is if, if the county reduces their mill levy a little bit, well, that's only twenty-five or thirty percent of your tax bill, because you still got your school district, you've got your city. So I'm kind of promoting and Ashley, Mayor Ashley knows this, I'm kind of promoting, if we all thought about reducing our mill levy a little bit, then that equals up being enough to where it makes an impact on them. And I, and the state is looking at reducing their mill levy, which is another part of your tax bill, that's a whole nother, we could have a seminar about, about that if we wanted to. So our financial situation is sound in Sedgwick County, hopefully that makes you feel better. We got through the crisis managing pandemic, CARES money and ARPA money, can you believe that? The federal government sent ninety-nine million dollars to Sedgwick County. CARES was to work on the pandemic, to fight the pandemic at that time, COVID. And the hundred million is, is American Rescue Plan Act, that's to, how can we help recover from the pandemic? Anyway, that was a bad two years chapter in our history and so I'm glad it's over. We did move out of our office to the Ruffin Building, if you're familiar with that downtown. It's, it's worked out really nice because now the courthouse is just a courthouse, all of the courts. So if you don't, if you're not a, you know, a witness or an attorney or, you have no business going to, going to the courthouse unless you're, you know, a juror or something like that. So that's now one hundred percent, it's secured and security for court activity. By that, so we used to be there with a lot of other, now we're in the Ruffin Building downtown. And so we remodeled the courthouse to make, make room for that. There's the county budget. It's a pretty sizable budget, half of, you know, half a billion dollars, five hundred and eighteen million. Fire district is that as well, at twenty-seven million. So again, the property tax rates are that for the Sedgwick County. And that, if you live, if you live in Kichai, you've got your own tax on that. If you're not, if you're outside the, the, if you're in the unincorporated area, then you have a fire district mill levy. Budget by function, this is kind of, to let you know, this is the size, so thirty percent of all of that money, their hundred sixty-seven is payroll to the thirty county departments, really closer to forty, but. Public safety is the sheriff, jail, fire corrections, courts, EMS, nine-one-one. And then the comm care, aging, it is seventeen percent. So you see right there, almost ninety percent of the, of the budget function is wrapped up in those. Then you have roads and bridges, the zoo and exploration, those are just three percent. And then community development is anything that might be related to economic development. All right, and then that's what it looks like as a pie chart. So you can kind of see the same thing that I just put on, right there, a hundred sixty-seven is related, right there, a hundred sixty-seven. So anyway, just gives you an idea of what our function. Revenue wise, property taxes is, so again, we're five hundred million, go back to this. So the revenue, two hundred and three of it is your property taxes, other charges for services or EMS has charges for ambulance service, things like that. Sales induced tax, forty million, motor vehicle tax, register your cars. So that's, that's the breakdown of the revenue. And then, so the last slide here, these are big projects that are going on. We're gonna relocate the crisis center downtown, right next to the, the Biomed Center that's going on here about the K E W S U, Biomed Center that's going downtown. That's a three hundred million dollar project that they're all doing together. We're gonna locate our crisis center down there, long overdue. The election office, we're gonna be announcing that in the next couple of weeks, that they'll, they'll have. There at the, the county, the Sedgwick County courthouse, where the election office is down in Mason. It's really a cool looking building on the outside, but it's a really bad building. Homeless people really like it and it's, and so, and it needs to be secure. Elections need to be secure and homeland security and Secretary of State has said, you've got to get out of there and get into a secure, secure environment. So we're gonna do that. The state mental health hospital, you've heard about that. I'm glad there's osmotomy, larded. And the third largest state mental health hospital is Jeff Easter Sedgwick County Jail. He's got like forty people in the jail that are pending analysis of mental health so they can either stay, stand in court or the judge has said, you know, you've got a mental health problem, I've been sentenced you, but there's no place to go. So they stay in, in Sheriff Easter's jail. Kind of sad. But anyway, the state, we worked hard, so thank, you know, thankfully, the state has recognized that and that state mental health hospital is going to be built in this region. There's four sites talked about. I think it's probably getting down to one or two here shortly. Anyway, the juvenile campus, if you know about it, is, is by Lindland Park. It's got some real functions that need to be, it just needs to be corrected. And then if we decide to build a county admin office, that could be as much as thirty-two million. Or we could rent the Ruffin Building as we do today for about eight hundred thousand a year. So then that'll, that'll be a big debate, kind of, do you spend your all's money, thirty-two million and want it? Or do you save eight hundred thousand a year to, to, to be there? Anyway, that's kind of a, a brief snapshot of what county government does. I would say what I've learned is county government, the city, you all do some great things and if you don't, but you may not ever call nine-one-one, you never, may never use the ambulance, may never go to court, may never go to jail, may never need comm care services, may never need aging services. But if you ever need those, you want them. So we spent a lot of the bones to, to take care of everybody and I don't know what the number is. Ninety percent of the public may never use them, but we have to have them. You need nine-one-one when you're calling. And, and so that, that's kind of where we're at. It's a, and then we leave it up to the cities to render cities and we just support it. So with that, thank you for letting me share this and could have a few questions if you want, but I know you've got a big meeting tonight, so I'll let, I'll let you all go. So thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Meister. I do want to give Commissioner Meister a big hand though, because no only did he come do this, but he also did finish up his chair, his year as chair for the county commission and now Commissioner, well, Chair Ryan Beatty of District Four is Chair and Pro Tem is Commissioner Lopez. But thank you very much for all your service and what you did as Chair. You do amazing work and I definitely look up to you all the time, so. He is also the Chair of REAP and I am the vice chair, so we do lots of work together. Thank you again, Commissioner Meister. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Public wishing to address the council are asked to sign a public forum request, forum in the fore year, listing your topic of law with your name, address and phone number. For the record, you are asked to limit your presentation to five minutes. Your comments or requests may be addressed at a future meeting. Debbie, do we have any public comment?
Kind of Bob Reader style.
All right, oh.
Thank you all for allowing me to come in tonight. I'm in the Bob Reader style, my wife and I have lived in Kichai for about six years now. We were fortunate enough to find a house up on the north end of Purgatory Creek that fit our, our needs and pretty well checked all the boxes we're looking for. We love the community, we love the town, we love the park. And I'm here today to talk to you about some concerns I've got about the park. What I've found is that there hasn't been a lot of maintenance being conducted in the park and I'm seeing some things that I think should be concerned are concerning me and I hopefully will, will concern the council as well. The main things that I'm finding right now, number one is the sidewalks, the condition of the sidewalks. We've got a number of places where we've got cracks, we've got uneven sections of the sidewalk. And initially, those aren't that big a problem, but if you look at them now, they are now meeting the definition of trip hazards and the definition, and if they're injured, I feel that there would be a liability concern for the, for the city. I know that there are some immunity conditions that the city is not necessarily liable, but in these cases, the damage in these cases, the damage or the condition of the sidewalk has pretty much been this way for about five years now, and nothing has been done after replacing the sections or repairing the evidence. So I think you would have a hard time defending a situation of not being liable for it, since it's obvious that this is damaged area. You know, public is there, and the, just a casual inspection of the property reveals this damage and the, and the situation there. So I'm hoping that, that we can get something going to where we actually address those, so we don't have citizens out there being injured. I've got a couple of photos there, you'll see, of some of the damaged areas. There are more than what I've got pictured here, but you can see that there are issues And the third photograph there shows part of, probably the worst section that I've noticed out there, that really, really needs attention, and I know that one's been like this for about three years now. In addition to the sidewalks, the, the bases of all the exercise stations that we've got out there are in terrible shape, they're cracked, they've got pieces that can be removed from them. Frankly, it makes the park look pretty bad. I, it's, it's a, the park is something I think the community is extremely proud of, it's utilized by the community members, and we need to keep it up. I think it needs to be inspection by the city and appropriate repairs made as soon as possible. I've attached a copy of A S T M F sixteen thirty-seven, the standard practice for safe walk surfaces, that provides minimum maintenance requirements for safe walkways. I've also attached copies of the definition of OSHA H eighty-eight for the trip hazards. Also attached is an excerpt from an article entitled Sidewalks in Kansas, Who's Responsible for What? This was written by a public health law firm at Mitchell Hamilton School of Law, discussing liability for sidewalks in Kansas. Suggests the city could be, could likely be liable for injuries resulting from defects, from defects of the structural. None of this information is intended to be legal advice. I am not an attorney, don't want to be, and so I'm showing, giving you information that I've become aware of, okay? In addition, the sidewalks, the bridge on the south end of the property is, is in bad shape, and I think it's been that way for a while. I know we've been doing some minor repairs to it as, as we've gone along, and I'm guessing that they're spending about every other month out there tightening the boards up and this sort of thing. There's at least two of the boards that have got rot on them. One of them, the rotted area, had been stained over, so it's been there for a while. I think this definitely needs to be addressed, because if we've got rotted boards there, somebody steps off, they're gonna catch a heel or something and go down, okay? The other major concern that I've got is the terrace at the north end of the property. Used to be the, I guess it is the neighborhood sign for Prairie Creek. We used to have it covered in bushes, and I understand that there was an issue that happened, that they were concerned about bees attacking kids or something that were in the bushes, and so they were removed. And artificial grass was put in, in place of it. The problem that that's created is that basically now is an extension of the playground. And I don't think that was the intent by any means, but kids are on that thing all the time in good weather. They're out there playing on it, they're climbing all over it. On the nor, the west end of that is about five, there's about a five-foot drop from the top of the terrace to the ground. The, there's no fall surface there. The, basically, you've got the artificial grass, and you've got compacted dirt. If a child falls off of that and is injured, I think we're in trouble. There's no guardrails. There's a requirement that any elevated play surface have guardrails around it. There's nothing there. If a child were to fall off of the side of that, they're, they're likely gonna hit the small wall that is around the perimeter of it, be injured and hit concrete or stones. Those stones are, the construction of that is stacked stone, so there's not anything holding that together other than gravity. I've seen kids out there throwing the rocks off onto the ground, and which potentially could weaken the entire structure. So I would really encourage the council to consider doing something there, whether they put up guardrails, they replant the bushes, and maybe put up a fence to keep kids out of it, or take the complete, take it completely out.
I've got to stop you there, I'm sorry, we're over the five minutes now. If you have any final thoughts?
Yeah, my main concern is for the, for the sake of the, the well-being of the citizens and for the financial stability of the city, for a lot of the listeners, please address these issues, there's money out there. My understanding is that there's about fifty-five thousand dollars in a park fund that was gonna be, go for the Park Master Plan or the Park Consensual Plan, which Mayor has advised us that those two are not being done, and those two plans are out now. So this money is out there, please use it, it won't take that much to, to take care of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie? All right, we will go ahead. Oh, you forgot it. So sorry. Thank you for not interrupting. We're gonna go ahead and close public forum, move on to old business, let's see, we have no old business, so we'll move on to the conditional use. I call Agenda Item Eight-B-A, consideration case number C U dash two zero two-three dash zero four, a conditional use request to allow a private arts and crafts studio or gallery to be built over adjacent lot lines in C three general commercial district zoning. Before we proceed, would any member of City Council wish abstaining from voting on this agenda, item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Let the record show that there are no abstentions and that a quorum of four council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petition from the owners of twenty percent or more of the property being rezoned, or twenty percent or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest for this case? So I will call, now call on zoning administrator Dustin Belton to present the case report, background information, and the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. C U twenty twenty-three dash zero four applicant is, and owner is Bill Caffey, not listed here is Rick Alley. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to construct an arts and crafts studio, private use, over interior lot lines of adjacent zoning lots for properties zoned as the C three general commercial district. The property is generally located north of Sixty-first Street, Ketchikan Road, and east of Snowbird. The applicant has plans to use the arts and crafts studio as a private gallery for his hunting clothes. The building is planned to be sixty-eight by a hundred and forty-four feet, or nine thousand seven hundred ninety-two square feet. The combined square footage of the two lots is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-eight square feet. The building will take up approximately thirty-two percent of the total space provided by both lots. C three general commercial district maximum square footage is forty percent. The properties are platted and currently undeveloped. Arts and crafts studio or gallery is defined in the zoning regulations as establishments that create, store, display, or sell works of art or individually crafted items. An arts and crafts studio is allowed on property in the C three general commercial district. General provisions state a primary structure may be constructed over the interior lot lines of adjacent zoning lots, having the same owner or record, only when approved by conditional use. In such case, the structure is considered one building, subject to applicable provisions of these regulations and other city codes. Such a structure shall be considered the primary structure for each zoning lot it occupies. Each occupied lot shall be considered an individual zoning lot for the determination of setback in yard requirements, except with interior lot lines crossed by the structure. In such cases, site setbacks are not required for the side lot lines crossed, and rear setbacks are not required for the rear lot lines crossed. Build regulations, a lot, excuse me, lot size and lot coverage requirements shall be determined using the aggregate requirements of all zoning lots occupied by the structure. Site plan below shows the estimated proposed distances between the building and lot lines for all setbacks. Any setbacks that are not met can be granted via a variance or, and/or adjustment of the building placement, mainly the northwest corner, see the site plan below for more information. A plan development overlay was granted by City Council on January twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, allowing the front yard setback to, to be reduced from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet. In twenty-eighteen, the subject site was platted as lots one and two, Block A, Ketchikan Business Park Edition. There have been no other zoning actions on the site. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north, south, and east are all zoned as C three general commercial. To the east, it is general commercial, undeveloped. To the west is R one and R two, single-family residence, multifamily residence, which is undeveloped. Venture Court is a paved local road, all public services are available and provided to the properties. The request for conditional use is in conformance with Ketchikan's twenty forty comprehensive plan. The future development plan from the, from the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for general commercial mixed traditional, which includes an arts and crafts studio. Based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. The arts and crafts studio or gallery must comply with the table of required off-street parking by land use of Section seven point three. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Compatibility buffering shall be provided in accordance with Article nine of the zoning regulations and illustrated on the approved site plan. Before a building permit is issued, a deed restriction shall be filed on the lots stating they must stay under common ownership. If the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. Zoning uses and character of the neighborhood, the property to the northeast and south are zoned as C three general commercial district, properties to the west are zoned as R one single-family residential district, developed, and R two multifamily residential district, undeveloped. Consistency with comprehensive planning vision. The request for the conditional use is in conformance with Ketchikan's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Adequacy of public utilities, roadways, and other public services relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use. All utilities and public services are provided to the area, staff do not see an increase in public utilities or services. Suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Subject site is currently zoned C three general commercial district, which permits an arts and crafts studio crossing over the interior lot lines by conditional use. Time property has remained vacant as zoned. The properties have been undeveloped before and after plant plating since January of twenty-eighteen. Compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby properties. That compatibility buffering is required by Article nine of the zoning regulations for a primary use other than R one single-family residential is located adjacent to any lot with a single-family residence. Existing screening is provided along the west property line via stone wall and satisfies this requirement. Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Proportionality of losses, impacts to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large. Staff do not see, do not expect negative impacts to property owners. Public input, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Below is an aerial view of the properties. Up here is Venture Court, over here is Snowbird, showing the zoning as this deep red as C three, this yellow is R two, and over here is R one. And to reiterate, there is a wall right along this property here. Development plan map, showing it, the property about to break here, with mixed traditional. The site plan, black and white, poorly able to be seen, is sixty-four, sixty-eight by a hundred and forty-four, includes an eight, eight-foot porch on a sixty-by-one forty-four Site photos, we have northeast, south of the subject property, and west of the subject property showing the wall. Planning Commission did approve this on December twelfth, I believe. Does council have any questions for?
Any questions? No questions?
Oh, perfect.
Does anyone in the audience wish, oh, I'm sorry, does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration? I do not see any attendance. Does council have any questions for the applicant who's not here? Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none. We're gonna go through the recommendations like I always do, council, and make sure you have any questions and approve of all of them. The zoning use and characters of, character of the neighborhood, you agree with the findings? Consistent with the comprehension vision and character of the city of Ketchikan? Adequacy of public utilities, roadways, and other public service relative to anticipated impacts of proposed use? Suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted? Length of time property has remained vacant as a? Compatibility of proposed district classification with nearby properties? Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property? Proportionality of losses slash impact to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large? Public input? Assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval, override the planning commission's recommendation of approval with a two-third, two-thirds majority vote of the governing vote body membership, which is four votes, returning the case to the planning commission for further consideration, along with the statement report, reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does council have any further questions? All right. I would, a motion of approval, denial, return to the planning commission has not been made yet, so I'm waiting for, sorry, waiting for that, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move we approve case C U dash twenty twenty-three dash oh four and adopt ordinance eighteen twenty-five dash twenty-four. Second?
A motion of approval was made by Councilmember Headstrom and seconded by Councilmember Burr. Is there any final discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero. Case number C U dash two zero two-three dash zero four is approved. The approval will become effective on the date. Ordinance number one eight two-five dash two-four is published in the Ark Valley News. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is council interviews. I do wanna ask council, do you guys need a recess for a minute or anything like that before we continue on? If not, I'm good to continue if you want. Okay. Before we start the interviews, it's important to discuss why we chose this process to fill the vacancy. First and foremost, the city council is committed to transparency with our residents. This format ensures all residents are and were informed about the opening and have the opportunity, or had the opportunity to be considered for the vacancy. By making this process, process open, we were providing residents with the chance to attend the meeting, learn about the candidates, and see the process through its entirety. It's important to note that the official process of selecting somebody for the position remains unchanged and is consistent with our city ordinance. I still make the appointment and submit the appointment for council for advice and consent. Tonight, we have scheduled four interviews, each featuring questions for every, from every council member. To ensure efficiency, each interview will be kept at twenty minutes, and I kindly request that responses be kept under two minutes per question. After conducting the interviews and with due consideration for the candidates, we've decided not to entertain questions from the public. This approach allows both council and myself to thoroughly evaluate the available information and, uh, will, and make a well-informed decision. Your understanding, and this matter is greatly appreciated. The order of the candidates is aligned with the sequence in which their applications were received. So first up, we do have Joni. Councilmember Burr, I knew you had a question.
No, we both have a theory, so I can...
Give me just one second, sorry.
I have too many papers. This is not coming out of your time, I promise. Whatever you desire.
I could go, I can go with mine.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So, um, this morning in my reading, I was reading Proverbs eleven, verse eleven, and it says, "Upright citizens are good for a city, and they make it prosper." So my question for you is, 'cause it's what I've been pondering all day, is how do I help Kichai prosper? What's my role in helping Kichai prosper? So, as I thought on that today, I thought, well, that's a great question for our candidates that come forward to me. So what would be your answer to that? And I'll ask each candidate the same question.
Okay. What is my role to help the residents of Kichai prosper? I really believe communication is key. I believe that the greater dialogue that we create as council members, and we listen to the community, and we have conversations, whether they're easy conversations or they're tough conversations, it's really important for Kichai residents to understand what is happening in city government, and for them to be heard by the council and to truly honor people in that regard. And so I am a huge proponent, as many of you are already aware, of communicating with the public and getting feedback from the public and listening and telling me to what they're saying so they can be best represented on council.
Okay, so follow-up on that, so, can use the word you're cogitating on this today, the word prosper. Define what you would say the word prosper would be for our community.
I do believe that in the, the prospering part of that and building the communication is that we build our community, and the stronger community that we have in Kichai, I believe that as we work together, that's how our town prospers. As we work together to create the solutions, the decisions, the plans that we have for our community, because then everyone has ownership in what we've been deciding for the community for the future of Kichai.
My question would be, what does transparency of government mean to you?
Good one, I like it. Transparency, it's not hiding things. It's not, it's, we need to be very transparent. We need to show what's in the budget. We need to, um, make information available. I'll use the one percent sales tax as an example because it's been a big topic for the last year. Um, fully sharing who's going to be impacted, in what ways is the one percent sales tax going to, um, impact everyone? Is it just a pasture tax? Is it going to, you know, impact our utility bills? Is it gonna impact the goods that we receive at our home? So transparency, we need to work, again, it goes back to communication. We need to be transparent about the decisions that are being made. Also, I feel like when you're voting for something, as a council member, I should be sharing that with the public, why I've made that decision, especially when it's hard topics. They should know why and how I've represented them. So the more transparent that we are in our decisions, in our communication, in contracts, in the budget, the more understanding that the public has what we're doing on their behalf, because they're trusting the council to make decisions for the town that they live in, how they'll be impacted by taxes, what the future plans are for Kichai. So I think it's very important that there is a greater understanding, and also transparency too. I think when there's subjects that are before the council on the agenda items, that there should be conversation happening between council members, asking questions, whoever's presenting, that more communication is happening, that they can see why somebody's making a decision. They can see that the council's asking questions when they're going to make a decision about a particular item.
Guess I do have a follow-up on that.
Okay.
You use transparency a lot in how you were describing it, so I guess where, what is it? What is transparency? You, you said communications, you, you kept using transparent, but what does that look like? Is it just communication? Is it just conversations? What, where is the line, and what, what do you do to do that? Because I guess I'm not understanding your...
Well, I think it's encouraging the city to have more transparency, publishing it on the city website, documents, information, the plans, making it easier to find information. It's not always easy to find that. I think it's the same with the council. I, I, I have to applaud Matt Genzby that he's now publishing the full city council packet. That is transparency, so that the public can see what's going to be discussed. The information is made available. So whether it's on the city website, or if it's holding community conversations where you're having discussions, so that people have opportunities to hear more, see more, have access to, there's a number of ways. It can be through Kichai Lamp articles. It can be, um, through the City of Kichai Facebook page or community groups. Like, the transparency can come on multiple levels. It's all about building relationships and having access to information easily for the community.
So then last follow-up for me, and then I'll move on to another council. Do you feel that transparency is subjective per person? That my version of transparency could be different than your transparency?
That's absolutely true, because everyone's human.
Thank you. Next council member.
So I have another question.
Sure.
So, uh, at our last city council meeting, Brian Adams was, was leading council. And he's an individual I have a lot of respect for. We've worked together the last four years, and, uh, he made it in his final comments, commented on, um, that him and I would often communicate about topics we didn't always agree.
Correct.
So, um, explain to the council how you would collaborate with other council members, and, um, would you describe yourself as open-minded?
I would say probably there's some people on the council that say I am not open-minded because of comments that I have made through public forum. However, I have reached out to council. Sometimes I get no reply, sometimes I do get replies. I think it's important that we work through easy conversations. I think it's important that we work through difficult conversations. I think we have to sit and communicate and have those conversations and listen and hear each other. We may decide to still say in the positions that each of us holds. However, I think there's an honor and a respect that needs to happen between all the different members on the council to hear one another. And yes, I may choose a different position than you do, but we have to work through those good and difficult conversations, and that should be happening. And even if someone was to contact me, or if I was to contact you, and we don't agree, you can still have the respect to respond back to someone and say, "Thank you for contacting me. However, I don't hold the same position that you do, but I appreciate you reaching out to me."
So follow-up question to that, do you think that's currently happening with council members?
It is not.
Even though, uh, Mr. Adams said that, you know, we have those dialogues and conversations and that we're working together and collaborating, you don't believe that's happening?
Between this council or between you and the public?
No, I'm talking about, we're talking about you interviewing for a council member position. We're not talking about the public.
You know what, there's a lot, um, I, I've heard, I've heard a lot over the past year about how you guys just don't really hear from the public. So I can't really answer that. I can only speak from my own experience in trying to interact with council.
Um, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry if I'm being...
I think it's something we can improve on, as council members.
Todd or Paul or Kendra, do you have a question?
What do you see as a top priority for Kichai and why?
A top priority, I believe, is actually updating the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan. And obviously, we just announced tonight that that is moving forward finally. I do believe that there's a lot that has happened in the world that that document should be reevaluated to make sure that it is aligning with the desires of where the residents who live in Kichai would want to see the city going. And collaborating together between the city, the council, and the community to actually have a, a healthy path for us to pursue with the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan.
So a question I have, Joni, is, um, if appointed by the mayor for this position, what would you be most excited about inserting the community in this way? And what would you be most concerned about?
Okay, uh, most excited about is being a voice for the people of Kichai. Um, because that's what I'm hearing, is a lot of people are feeling like they're not. They don't have a voice on the council. And the most difficult part is actually building relationships with people that don't aren't willing to work through difficult things. And I would say that the hardest part would be building relationships between the council members. Um, some who've been very clear of their feelings towards me, but I'm willing to work through them.
I think you can almost answer.
Can I, can I follow?
Yeah.
So how would you handle disagreements with another council member or, um, I guess that's, that's the word, disagreements? How would you handle that?
Yeah, I, I think when two people sit down and actually have conversation, and you listen to one another, sometimes I might say something that "You didn't take the way that I meant it to be said," and maybe you say something that I didn't hear it the way that you were trying to communicate. But I think when we have conversation, we can work through having a better understanding of each other, and I think those are the things that help build relationships that we can move forward. In fact, one example would have been the last community conversation that we had on a Saturday morning here. That conversation started out very rough with the community. But you know what, by the time we got through the end of that conversation, there was progress being made, and people had hope again that good things were gonna happen in Kichai.
I have a question. How do you feel about, uh, the privacy of another council member when you're communicating with the residents of Kichai?
It's not my place to talk about any other council member.
How would you handle, um, the Facebook groups if you were to be nominated?
I will still be a part of them.
To what extent?
You see what I do now.
So you would be as vocal as you are currently?
My focus would be completely on the education side. The people of Kichai desire to learn more about how the city is operating, what's in the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan. I would not take positions on social media. That's not an appropriate thing for me to be doing, especially if I was on the council. However, I will continue to educate the public regarding city government processes.
Would you work with staff to make sure that all information is correct before publishing?
I'm certainly willing to have conversation. There has been no desire to have conversation with me in the past.
Council member, any, Headstrom, do you have any questions?
No, haven't already been asked.
Okay. Joni, do you have any questions directly related to filling a council member's seat?
I do not.
Does council have any further questions?
I can talk a lot.
Well, you have said that. Do you want another one?
No, this is your, this is your thing.
I, I guess the last, we haven't really asked it, how would you, um, ensure a fair and inclusive approach when maybe a silent majority doesn't agree with a hot topic item with you?
That's actually one of the things I've been trying to work on lately, is trying to get people to speak out who are not holding what the more vocal position has been holding lately. Um, I have had more people that are starting to speak out. I really appreciate it, I've made sure to thank them to be willing to speak up, because I think it's important for every person's voice to be heard in the city of Kichai.
Okay. Any other question?
Go ahead.
So, um, how long have you been in Kichai?
Almost eighteen months.
What have you enjoyed most about, um, your time in, in Kichai community? What's been, what's, what have you enjoyed the most?
It's the smell.
I know you enjoy your walks around the park with the dog.
Yeah, Ruby. I, I mean, yes, I love, I love the dog.
You're not gonna get them the next few days.
No.
But what, what, what do you love about, um, the Kichai community? What have you loved about your experience here? Tell, tell me a little bit about that.
It's the people, literally. From the first day, beginning to meet people, um, being out and about in the community, having conversations, whether I'm out or someone comes by, it's having the conversations, listening. I love especially listening to people who've been here for a long time that are filling me in on history. We have neighbors around us that have been here for many, many years, and I love hearing. I love getting the pieces that I don't know, because obviously, I have a ton to learn about Kichai and its history, all of those things. Um, I'm an outsider, I'm not even from Kansas. So every time I get to have another conversation with another person that lives here in Kichai, I'm blessed, because I get to hear a little bit more and a little bit more. Yes, I get to hear a lot of rumblings too, but you sort, you work through that, and there's just so many relationships that are here to be made, and it's like, it's the people. It's the people of Kichai that is the best part about being here.
So you know I'm a part of a lot of groups, a lot.
Yes.
What civil groups or county groups, uh, would you be interested in being part of?
County groups? Hmm, I don't really know what county groups. I haven't really explored that. Um, however, I am a huge outdoors person, and I want to see the park board reestablished.
Any other questions, council? Well, um, we do have four minutes, so Joni, do you have any final statements you'd like to make to us or anything about this position?
Um, one of the things that I stated, um, in my, uh, resume card was, I think it's important, our council to not all think the same. I think it's important that we have a diverse group of people, and that we don't all think the same, and that we have the opportunity to work together, to wrestle through things, to come to decisions in how we move forward to make Kichai the best we can make. That's what I have to say.
Alright, thank you very much, we appreciate your time. Next, we have Cheryl. Alright, Matt, do you wanna start?
Sure. First question last time. I quoted, um, uh, this proverb, "Upright citizens are good for a city, and they make it prosper." How would you define prosper? And as I said earlier, I've been thinking about that all day. How do we make our community, our city prosper?
Gosh, there's, there's so many ways that you can make the, the city prosper. You can, you know, I, uh, I guess just grow, okay? That's a, that's a good way to make it prosper. But how do you do that, and what does that mean? I would say... Um, I would say, uh, prosper meaning, um, financially, to prosper, right? What do we do with our businesses? What do we do with getting more businesses into Kichai? What about people? What about their, their way of life, uh, their, their enjoyment, what they do, uh, making sure that they are taken care of, right? That we care for each other. That's a, that's a, that's a way of looking at prosper. And I think that the, the council, um, and the, and the staff, right, have, you know, their, what I have seen so far, I've been here eight years, is that they do care for the people that are here, and they, they want everyone to prosper. Because when everyone prospers, the town prospers, right?
That was good, thank you. I liked up the definition of the word prosper, and you hit on some of those things. And by the way, I have a dictionary, the old kind, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Actually on my desk, and you actually look up words, you know?
Yeah, that's what I got too.
You have a computer and a phone, right?
Yeah.
It's paper.
So, um, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked, Joni. Um, what does transparency in government mean to you?
Uh, yes, so transparency, transparency as far as what that means to me on just the general word, um, is to be able to see, right? To be able to see what is going on in government, for people to be honest, to people to be trustworthy, um, for them to, if, you know, to have a conversation and if I ask you, hey, you know, what, um, you know, what is the budget for this next year? You know, that we can have a conversation about that, or, or that we would be able to, uh, look at some documents, right? Um, how, transparency and process, um, that's definitely a, a big one, right? What is the process? You know, what, what are we, what, what are we thinking as far as a council, as far as a business district, arts district? You know, transparency for, for, uh, for the, for the public to come here and, and at the public forums to say, hey, you know, um, you know, what, what do you guys think about, you know, this next year for our, uh, sixty-first, sixty-first street? You know, what do you think? What do you think about the lights? Where do you think about the, whatever it is? And be transparent about what's going on, be transparent about kind of what you're, what you're thinking. Uh, one of the one things that I thought was really good was when you did have the Saturday morning, um, meetings or, you know, the conversations, um, that was an excellent opportunity to be transparent, and I thought you did a good job with that.
Well, thank you. I, I mean, I don't wanna take your time, but it, it, I have been talking with Matt Jonesy about bringing that back. I, I do wanna tell everybody that, but that was a later conversation of our updates. I just, it, it's been brought up a lot, so I just wanted to make sure we addressed it, so I'm sorry to take you back.
No problem.
How would you do it differently as a council member? What, how would you emanate what you're saying is transparent?
As far as transparent? I would really, um, like to hear more from you. I wanna know what you're thinking, you know? I wanna know what your questions are. I wanna know if, you know, we are, um, you know, what do you think about the budget? What do, what do you think about, um, the facilities, uh, you know, and the streets? And what do you think about? You know, so many times we bring things up and we have a vote, and, I mean, I understand that it takes time to do all of that, but so much of the time, I'm not really hearing what each one of you is thinking. And, and, um, I think it would help everybody in the audience, you know, instead of just having a vote and one person votes this way, and these three people will vote another way, or however it goes, you know, why is that? You know, maybe there's something that we're not getting, maybe there's something else that we need to talk about.
Thank you, I, I didn't wanna cut you off, I'm more sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, same question. So how would you handle a situation with a fellow council member who you strongly disagree with?
Oh, it's going to happen, just saying, right? So, um, happens all the time at work, right? Been doing this for thirty, thirty seven years, almost forty years, so, uh, those are, uh, very constructive conversations. It's all in how you do it. It's all in how you, you talk to each other, right? It, it's not, you know, accusation, it's not, I'm better than you. It's, we have two different versions, we, we have two different ideas, they're not the same, and we don't want everyone to be the same. We want people from diverse backgrounds, we want people from, uh, you know, to have diverse thoughts, because that's how we grow. And it's a, it's a really good opportunity for a council to be able to, to, to utilize those thoughts and those ideas, those diverse ideas. And that's why I'm gonna call, instead of not agreeing, they are diverse ideas, right? And you can, we can learn a lot from each other.
If you were appointed to the council today, how would you share, uh, your voice, in your opinion, with the residents of Kichai?
How would I share my voice? Well, I think that there are lots of opportunities. We do have, uh, when it's, the weather's pleasant, we do have more opportunities to get out to the public. We have a fair, we have, you know, um, I've seen the, the different, like, we used to have the parade, we used to have the, you know, we, I've seen things over at the, the, oh, the garden center.
Valley, Valley Forum.
The nursery, yes. So I think there's plenty of opportunities to get out. I'd like to see that a little bit more, probably. And then also to be able to just take, um, the, uh, opportunity here as a council member, right, to maybe stay a little bit late and talk to the people that are here, that's what I would do, and find out what they are affected. You know, what is it from, from them, what is it that I can do for you?
Uh, you have a question? Thank you.
Sure, I do have one that's a little bit difficult. So a couple meetings ago, you came and asking what legal, uh, rights you brought up about overturning a public vote for the sales tax.
Absolutely.
And I was wondering, maybe you could explain that a little bit, because honestly, I have some really pretty big concerns about somebody wanting to overturn what the people voted for.
So let's talk a little bit about that. I'm questioning, and there's been several people in this meeting that have been questioning the one percent. The reason why I brought that up is because, uh, when we had the one percent vote, there was a flyer that went out, said that it was going to help with the mill letties, you know, keeping those low, stable, you know? Um, there wasn't much, uh, about, um, it affecting the residents of Kichai, but there was a lot that was said about the, uh, one percent that would be more along the lines of people coming through Kichai, that they would pay that. There was hardly, I don't believe there's anything about the, you know, like, if you get anything from Amazon, or if you wanna build a fence, or something like that, there wasn't.
Those were discussed at the public forums.
When the information came out to the public in the flyer, those type of things. And if you talk to a lot of the people in the, like, my neighbors, if you wanna talk to my neighbors, they will tell you that they knew nothing about any of that. So, I think that, you know, if there is a public, if the public is having an issue with that, you know, what is the perception? Do we need to really look at that again? Is it possible for us to, like, look at it again? And how would that work? Is it legal to even overturn something like that? I don't know, and that was my question for him, right? Because if it's not, and it, then there's no, there's not even any reason to even go down that road. But if it is, then, you know, we've mentioned all these things that we would like to do in Kichai. The surveys have said sidewalks, businesses, you know, bike paths, I mean, you can just go down the whole list, right? And none of them did they ever say anything about an intersection. I just wonder, along with, uh, some of my neighbors, exactly is that a priority? Or could that eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars go to, you know, help the parks, help some of the other things that we have going on that we need to work on here, uh, in Kichai?
I guess I very much understand the other priorities, I just, I, I needed to ask the question of-
Absolutely. I'm glad to-
Because I, I feel that's, the public spoke, the public voted, and had their say, and I was very glad that we were able to do it that way, instead of just levying a property tax. So I was very concerned when there was talk of wanting to go against what the people voted for.
And I, like I said, I'm hearing different. There, there, you know, here again, talk about difference of, and diverse, right? So maybe that is something that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
So, like I said to Joni, I'm a part of a lot of groups. What civic groups or county groups are you interested in being a part of?
Definitely if you bring back the park, the parks, right? Cause, and I, I volunteered the night, we talked about that. And I'm like, Joni, I don't know much, much about the county, um, but as far as what Kichai, uh, definitely, possibly the fair committee, um, those type of things that, you know, for events here in town. I was not aware that there was like only six, seven people on that committee, so, yeah, those type of things I'm very much interested in.
Councilor, any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Fine.
So, I'm trying to remember some of the same ones that I asked, some of the same ones. Uh, what do you, if appointed to this position, and this is the mayor's appointment, um, what would you be most excited about with this opportunity? And what would you be most concerned about fulfilling this responsibility?
Uh, most excited? I think it's, it has to do a lot with your very first question, which is prosper. Wanting to see in, in the best, uh, for Kichai. Wanting to hear from the public. Wanting to be able to help the city grow, but grow in a good way, not just grow people, but grow culture as well, grow business, you know? Be able to bring people from Wichita, the surrounding communities, you know, to want to come to Kichai, to go to, to, uh, you know, the quilt shop, or the loom shop, or, you know, card and whatever. That excites me, thinking that we could possibly, we could, we've really got a blank slate here that we can work with, and be able to, uh, bring all of our great creative minds together, right? We're in an arts, artsy community, right? We, we should be able to, you know, really think outside the box, come up with some great ideas to make this town prosper. That's what makes, makes it exciting for me. Concerns is always, you know, making sure, uh, every, that, that we stay safe, right? I'm, I'm glad to hear that we've got, now we're all staffed up, that is, that's great. So that's a little concern off my, off my shoulder there. But, you know, the safety of all people in Kichai is always a concern. Making sure that we have enough money, uh, to do what we want to do. Making sure that we have a priority, that we set our, our, our wants and our needs in a, in a list, a priority list. That, I think, um, was probably one of the things that really spurred the, the intersection for me, right? Because, I mean, I see a lot of the things, like even the, the parks, and what you were referring to with the, the parks and being able to, to, to get the, everything fixed that we need to have fixed. The roads, make sure that everything is fixed for the, on the roads, and facilities, our sewer system, all that. Making sure that we have the right priorities, I mean, that for, for Kichai. You know, it's great that we can have a nice, like, intersection, but if we don't have a sewer system, you know, or, or water system is i- in trouble, then, you know, it's, it's hard to swallow, right? So just, those are the things that kinda concern me. And I'll be honest with you here about that, because some of that, I, you know, I'm not on the council. I, I don't know. All I know is from what I hear, and from what I know as the public, what I get from the website, or what I get from, you know, s- social media, or whatever. So that's some of the things that I would like to, as a concern, that I would like to see improved and some, some opportunities for us.
I have another question. This is one I didn't ask Joni, but I just thought of, sorry, Joni.
Nothing to?
So I'm just thinking, so, uh, city government, this is nonpartisan, you know, this is nonpartisan government. Um, and I'll just be honest with you, you know, you're wanting to know what our opinions and things are, I guess, as council members. There's a lot of noise in culture today, there's just a lot of noise out there, we hear lots of things, there's a lot of division, uh, there's a lot of conflict. As a public servant, as a city council member, it's kind of a thankless job, I mean, you know, you, you give a lot of hours, um, to volunteer to help your community be better. How, how would you, as a council member, strive to bring about unity when there's so much noise, um, in the world around us today? Does that make sense? I don't know if I articulated that right.
Well, I'll, I'll give a shot.
Sure.
So, I think that, um, the task at hand, I think that when we can, as a council, can focus on a task at hand, um, give our opinions about that, have some creative type of conversation around that, getting ideas off of each other. I think that that can, uh, can be, can do nothing but be positive for this town. I understand too, that you don't want to necessarily just blurt out stuff that we're not, um, you know, aren't on solid ground about, right? But, um, I, I do think that, you know, that the public does see each one of you, and sees how you vote, um, and sees, you know, some of the things that occasionally that, you know, that we pick up on, right? If we could have more of a foundation for that, um, I think would, would be better. Maybe just getting to know you, maybe, maybe some of that would, would help as well. But I, I think that it's, um, it's one of those things, it's, it's a balance. You don't wanna give too much, oh, sorry.
No, you're fine, you can finish your thought.
It's okay to scare me to death.
Don't wanna give too much, but then again, don't want to, uh, you know, leave, leave people hanging as to question, wondering what they're, what they're thinking, you know? So, does that kinda answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Cheryl.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Karen. All right, Karen, all right, Matt, go ahead.
Hi, Karen. So you're probably- So you're probably thinking, why did I do Proverbs eleven? Well, today's January eleven. Proverbs eleven, verse eleven, upright citizens are good for a city and they make it prosper. Uh, what, I've been thinking about that all day, what does that mean to you?
I guess for prosp, for me prosperity means happiness. That joy that you have, get every day, just, um, you know, for me, it's, I open the curtains into my office and I see the park, and to me, that brings into me joy and prosperity. I'm in a, I'm in a beautiful little city, uh, very little city of Kichai. We have, you know, safety, we have, um, thanks to our police department, thank you very much. We have, um, opportunity, we have small businesses, we have creativity in our, in our community, you know, with our arts and crafts and, and those types of business. Those, those are the things that drew me to Kichai. So I see prosperity as, um, being joyful every day for being able to witness Kichai.
Same question. What does transparency in government mean to you?
Transparency, and I, I know to be a repeat of what Cheryl and Joni already said, that transparency in communication and being able to, um, understand some of the decisions that are made by the council are, I think are important. Because I know sometimes I read through the minutes and I read things, uh, on our website, and I'm like, I don't understand why, uh, that decision was made. Maybe if I knew why, the whys, the reasons, it would make more sense to me. And so sometimes, uh, that is a frustration for me as a citizen, is seeing, um, the decisions that are made, it's like I just don't understand. So the communication and some openness as to, um, not only the decisions that are made, but why those decisions fall, uh, are, fall the way they fall are important.
I guess I have a little bit of a follow-up on that.
Sure.
Do you feel like it's only a council member's, uh, I'm trying to think of the word, role to provide that to you? Or do you feel it goes both ways, that you, you should ask the questions and we should give it to you too? Or how do you feel that role should work? How do, how do we make it so that everybody feels like they're giving some?
Well, I can ask the question, but how is it, you know, how is that communication provided? Is it provided to just me as a distinct citizen, or is it provided to all the community? Because I'm sure whatever my questions are, are the same questions that other people have as well. So, uh, I think it should be, um, both. I mean, communities are, citizens, of course, are able to ask questions and should answer. And, um, secondly, you know, I think those conversations, whatever can be made available that's appropriate, should be made transparent and open to the citizens.
Oh, they, do you feel that transparency is individual? Like my version of transparent is, uh, my opinion of transparency is maybe not the same as yours?
I believe that's true. I, I think, I think that is a very subjective, um, word. So, I think what, your transparency might be different than mine. I might want all the answers, but you're gonna only say, you know, this is the appropriate amount of information that you need as a citizen. So, I think there has to be a balance of what is shared, um, what is appropriate and what is not appropriate.
Perfect, thank you. Next council member.
So, if you were on council, how would you better communicate with the residents? Like your, your voice?
Well, I think as a council, we should decide how that should be handled. Is it, is it through, um, the newspaper, is it through Facebook? Is it, you know, what, what are, what are some of the channels? And there are many channels, as we know, uh, today. There's email, there's texting, there's Facebook, there's, um, you know, our newspaper. There's so many avenues for communication. It's like, as a council, we should agree as to what we're going to say and, and what channels we're gonna send those messages out. And I think that should be, um, maybe standardized.
Karen, uh, if you're elected to, or appointed to the council, what would be some of your, maybe your top three priorities that you would like to address?
Um, priorities? For me, a big concern, of course, is the park that everybody has expressed, um, concerns over the condition of the park right now. I think that's probably one of the top priorities. For me, for us, we see it as an attraction for not only the people that live on the park, but, uh, all of the city. And there are even people that come from Park City or from Bel Air and visit the park. So I think, um, it is kind of a face of our Kichai, as well as our arts and business district as well, are the face of Kichai. And so we want those areas to look really nice. So that's one of the very top priorities. I don't know very much about the intersection. I'd like to learn more about that and see, um, what the progress is on that. What are the expectations for it, the budget for it? What is really realistic and what is, um, going to bring more value to Kichai and the intersection project? That may be already passed, and I'm, I'm coming in too late on that project, I don't know. Developing, um, our, uh, business and arts district. I, I kind of agree with Joni that we need to relook at our 2040 plan. Is it aligning with the most recent survey? Maybe review that as well.
My question again. What civic group or county groups are you interested in being a part of? I'm a lot of, a part of a lot.
Obviously, obviously a part. And, um, uh, interesting to hear, um, from our fair board, uh, that we have such a small fair board. I would be interested in it. I'm not sure how well I would, um, fit into it. I've not ever participated in anything like that. As far as the county, I have a lot to learn about the county that I have no idea. I, that would be, um, I'll file that under, I don't know.
Any other questions, councilor?
Yeah, same one. What would you be most excited about, uh, if appointed, uh, for this position over the next two years? And what would you be most concerned about?
I think, um, learning about the city government and how things operate are exciting things. And seeing how, uh, we can make an impact. How, how can we continue to make Kichai a wonderful place to live? That's one thing I'm excited about. As far as what am I concerned about, my-
Tell us how you might handle a situation with a fellow council member who you strongly disagree with.
I think that will happen. I can guarantee it will happen, and that's okay. We're all different, we all have different points of view, um, we all have opinions, we all have different life experiences. If we work together, build relationships, just like I said before, that's how you build unity. Then we can work together to find a solution to whatever the issue is. And we may or may not continue to agree, that's okay. If we can still be friends, we can still work together, that's fine.
Any other questions, councilor?
Everybody asks such great questions. I'm sitting up here going, well, I don't know if this is really covered up here.
I'll say being number three is kind of hard, because there's been so many great answers for me. It's like, how am I supposed to improve on that?
So sorry, we tried. Do you have any questions for council? I've asked, I'm sorry Cheryl, I don't know if I had time to ask you that, so I apologize. Do you have any questions for us about the position or anything?
Um, I don't have any questions right now, but Paul?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
He caught a really good one.
Well, I, I, it was staring me right in the face when I was sitting here. And I can't believe I overlooked it. So I'm gonna ask you this question. How would you handle a situation where a resident expressed dissatisfaction and frustration?
How would I handle that?
Yes.
Um, I certainly would want to listen and try and get all the information I could from that person. Is it, is it fact, or is it conjecture? Is it, um, not factual? And then, um, maybe bring it to the council for discussion as to, okay, this is what I heard from the community. What is true, what is not true? And how can we communicate back to the community what is true? And, you know, maybe explain why a decision was made? Or why do we take a certain direction on, on, at the council? So, uh, I think communication and, um, being transparent, being open, communicating back with not only that citizen, but all the citizens.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilor? Thank you so much, we appreciate you. If you have any final thoughts or anything.
I appreciate your time to, um, chat with me and, uh, ask great questions. And, uh, I know what, whoever takes this seat, um, you know, I congratulate them, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, and go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Okay, um, what does the statement mean to you, especially the word prosper? Upright citizens are good for a city and they make it prosper.
That means the residents are happy. That means that they're wanting to be, be part of this community. It means that we're happy ourselves to be in this community. That's how I feel about prosperity.
What does transparency in government mean to you? Final answer.
Transparency, um, is kind of like, there are things that, that you should know and there are things that you should not know. Like, uh, I don't know, like people's salaries up to the point to where, but if I were to come in and ask you for a piece of paper saying that what was on this, uh, part of the meeting or something like that, can I get that hand to you? I would like to see that, that's transparency. I don't think discussions between, uh, the council members or something like that should be transparent towards the deal myself, because we're trying to figure out how up here that we're supposed to tell these people that we're gonna, uh, do what we're gonna do.
What, do you believe that transparency is subjective?
Absolutely. Yeah, well, I think it's transparent, it's not transparent to only the person.
Alright, Karen's, next council member.
Tell us how you might handle a situation with a fellow council member who you strongly disagree with.
Well, I've been on, uh, board of directors for many, in trying, six years, um, out of twenty-five years I've been there. We've had twelve guys in London, so there have been many discussions. And it does get heated at times, and you just respect each other. You learn to listen to what everybody's saying. And then we go out and have a beer later.
What civic groups or county groups are you interested in being a part of?
Um, I'm from Harper County. My grandfather was a mason. I'm a master mason, I'm a, uh, martial master in two thousand and four. I've been mason twenty-seven years and I've been a shriner for twenty-five. So, and I, and I do help with, uh, I'm, I'm a mechanic also. So whenever those guys ask me, like Thomas, and say, hey, can you kind of, uh, you know, look at this or whatever? I can do that.
Can we do that too?
Oh, absolutely. You wanna do that, that's fine, that's fine. I'm a fleet manager of sixty-four trucks and vehicles and equipment and all the kinds of stuff, that's what I did.
So you're good at rounding up people, is what you're saying? Councilor, any further?
Gary, what would your top three priorities be that you'd like to see addressed?
Oh, arts and business district is one, 'cause I'm right smack dab in the middle of it. And, you know, I thought I didn't really want it, but, um, it's been great for my wife. She goes over to Richards and, uh, what's the other? Danny Drystone, man. Oh, she comes home with some plant, pot of plants and stuff all the time, so, she goes over next door. So, when Bond's getting ready to build it next door, then, let him do it. That's, you know, it's progress, just like over at the, uh, open field. That's progress, that's what we should have, that's what we're here for.
I'm sorry for your pocketbook.
Happy wife, happy life.
Yeah, take note. In situations where local minorities express strong opinions on hot topics, how would you ensure a fair and inclusive approach, especially when it contrasts with the stance of the silent majority?
Respect each other. Build a relationship with them, ask them what he's wanting to talk about and learn and, and, uh, and have a dialogue with them.
So a couple of my previous questions. So, if appointed to this position, um, what would you be most excited about? What would you be most concerned about?
I'm excited about listening to the people, seeing what they want. I want to see what, which direction they would like to, uh, have Kichai go. What's the other part of the question?
What would you be most concerned about?
Most concerned about would be the residents' pocketbooks. I want to figure out, is there other ways of doing things besides raising mill levy or raise taxes on or something like that? That's one of the most, most pivotal ones right there. Because we're all getting hit in the pocketbook nowadays.
Another question I asked earlier, I'm trying to ask the same ones, I'm sorry if I didn't. But, uh, a lot of noise in culture today, a lot of division. How, how do you bring about unity?
Can I just answer that one?
A little.
A little bit, but, uh, um, I think that's something that, that we strive for as a council, is to collaborate, to bring about unity. But there's just, a lot of times, a lot of noise, um, where that's not all we see possibly. But just kind of what's your vision for bringing about? When I think about-
What we can do to maybe help?
Well, when I think about, uh, um, you know, upright citizens are good for a city and they make it prosper, I think about that being collaborative. I think about that being working together. And, um, considering, uh, as Cheryl said earlier, just everybody from all into the spectrum, you know? No matter what their values are or, um, what they believe in. But how do we make our community prosper be the best that it can be?
Listen to them, listen to the people and what they're talking about. Enjoy everybody's company. I mean, they're all a lot gonna get along, but you're still gonna have to listen to what people are saying. And people want to be heard. People want to be respected. You know, and if you respect them, they're gonna, they're gonna give you their true feelings and their true wants and ideas.
Yeah, I think you hit on a word that I think is, is key, is respect.
Alright, well, we'll give this one a shot here. Hi. If you're appointed today to the council, how would you communicate with the residents of Kichai?
Um, I'd like to go knock door to door, I would. I think too much gets put out on Facebook that's very laundry myself. I can say that in a shrine, happens too. Put up a suggestion box somewhere, let somebody drop a note. Put, um, I mean, your phone number's out there, your emails are out there, let them contact you that way. I mean, listen to them that way.
Any other questions, councilor? Alright, saying done, thank you very much for-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Alright, council, um, do we need a recess maybe, just for a couple minutes to kind of go to the bathroom, regroup? Then, um, maybe five minutes? So if somebody would entertain a motion, so I can do that? Entertain a motion for a recess for five minutes, please. Stay so moved.
Just a second, what do we have left on the agenda?
Update then.
Oh, that's right, we have staff updates. Yes, I make the motion that we recess for five minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Matt, second by Todd, all in favor say aye. We are in recess for five minutes and that will be 8:55, we will come back. Thank you.
Somebody.